Well, call the meeting order. Roll call.
Mayor Westergaard.
Yep.
Woltman.
Yep.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Huss.
Here.
Stankin.
Okay, consent agenda. Any additions or corrections?
Just that the building permit is approved.
You have a motion on the consent agenda?
Make that motion.
Roll call? Second, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yep.
Huss.
Okay, everybody's read about the sanitary sewer on South State Road. We have three options or four?
Just a couple of things to take a look at. First of all is, you know, I'd ask Erin to give opinion on this. That letter from Erin's on page four. Uh, we're just talking about the current sanitary sewer ordinance at 166.20.8. That's in our subdivision code. That's talking about having developers install their sanitary sewer. And she's noting that the city could make changes to that through resolution and a majority vote. And then, uh, her last paragraph there about cautions. But... That, uh, you know, she's saying construction of sewers historically been the cost of the owner or developer. And secondly, the city would incur a lot of unexpected and expected expense to take on such a request. Um, so that was the response from Erin. Page five looks at... There's three different options here. I want to talk through them a little bit because I laid out not only the cost of each one, but there's a procedure that would follow depending on what type of sewer this is. And the first one says that the city installs a sewer main as a public main and installs it down to Cleveland's and Litterer's. Okay? In order to install, extend a public main, okay, we need to, uh, uh, we need to end up with a DNR extension permit. So there's some things that need to happen to get that. First thing, though, is that the city would change, uh, regulation regarding this. You know, we want to be consistent with what our code would say. We do need to hire an engineer because they need to sign off on this extension, uh, permit application. Although I talked with our engineer about that today. He says it can be, uh, just some cursory stuff, you know, as far as, uh, not really detailed specifications on the project, just some plans. Okay, work with the DNR Hancock to obtain easement through there. Then we would obtain the, uh, the extension permit. And, uh, then you can see what the, what the cost would be if the city lets a bid. These are just cost estimates, just some real rough ideas on materials, manholes, just, uh, the cost of that engineering. Anyway, estimate of, uh, estimated cost $12,250. If the, uh, customer installs this as a private sewer service line, that is that, uh, you know, we, we wouldn't claim this to be a public main. We would never have this dedicated as a public main. Maintenance responsibility still lie with the users, with the, with the two customers. So first thing, just saying, it's a big question, determine who pays for the improvements, the customer, the city, or whether there'd be a cost share. Okay, again, working with the DNR to get an easement. And then also an easement to that DNR manhole and also work with DNR or Hancock to get an easement to run down that property line. Okay? Customer bids or installs the job himself and you can see what some of the costs are. Uh, there's some of the costs taken out, like the engineering. Doesn't need to be manholes. You can go with the, with smaller pipe for a, for a private service line. Again, talking with our engineer today, I asked him whether, you know, this, could the city install at city expense a private sewer line? And he actually said, yes, you could. You know, it's been done. Uh, it's been done before and, uh, although he suggested that we not go with a four-inch service line to run 1,000 feet, that was, that was too small, he said, but we'd look at a six-inch. Third option being that the city install a sewer main, maybe as what you might call phase one of sanitary sewer to the south side of the lake. Okay? So this concept would be that be just baking, uh, really banking on the notion that at some point the DNR's gonna tell the city to get our sanitary sewer main out from under the lake. And that, again, runs from basically the point of Provost Point straight across the lake to Denison Beach area. And last, uh, two winters ago when it was, when the water was so low and, uh, and it was so cold that that winter, that froze and we had some big problems with it. And the DNR took note of that. So if they look at dredging the lake sometime, we would expect that they would come to us with a request to relocate that sewer. So this would say, well, maybe it's phase one of that project. Let's extend the city main further south towards the lake. So again, this, uh, this requires that we would hire an engineer, you know, work with the DNR. In this case, we would likely assume ownership of that sanitary sewer line or the manhole that's east of the office. Either that or, again, just bypass and we would hook into our own system further to the north, which is by Hancock. Three says that you work with the DNR to obtain an easement to run the line south of the DNR office to a point that's likely south of Litterer's driveway. Again, so this is closer out there by the, kind of the west side of South State Road. And again, we, we would have to get a sewer extension permit. City lets bid on this. And then to put these cost estimates together, just knowing, just know they have very little faith in those cost estimates. I see this project be much, much more expensive than $12,000. And, but the last point there, Cleveland and Litterer are responsible for installation of their own service line to the main. If you look at the pictures on page seven, this would be basically what we looked at for options one and two. Installing main and whether it's straight down the property line or whether it cuts across the properties, you know, that's, um, but this would be the concept. For option number one, two, page eight has that option number three. And, and this would show it going down, again, maybe to the south side of Litterer's driveway. Just starts the extension of the, of the sanitary sewer around the lake.
So my Provost, oh, excuse me. Where's Provost go?
Everything in Provost actually drains back to the east to that lift station.
Oh, and goes across the lake?
And goes across the lake, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
Everything from the campground goes across the lake, too, right?
Yeah.
Thirty-eight kilometers. The gravity flows from the stone, this historical building out there. That's about the end of the sewer line. Then it goes from there across through Hanky's Field and to a lift station there, pumps it over to, I don't know if you know where Dick Schwartz's cabin is, the very end one, pumps it into there, gravity flows to the lift station. And then Jan Roeder's house right below Shotgun Hill, um, like 102 Cabin somewhere in there, there's a, that's where it starts gravity flowing back to the lift station at Provost Corner, or Point, Provost Corner.
I don't think they ever had much trouble out there, really.
Well, there's a lot of people that aren't on that sewer yet. There's a, the original sewer main that belonged to Byron and that dumps into that lift station also. And that's from about one, I'm gonna say 160 goes, and there's another line there that gravity flows back to the Provost Point. But that isn't the city's responsibility. There's just a lot of people that never hooked up to it because of the cost. They said, well, this one's working. Let's use this one. And they have Roger Ruder go through it once a year and...
Gus, the obvious question is, which one do you like?
Well, I was out there today, walked it off with the DNR, went over and talked to Doug. And Doug seems to think it'd be all right if we go by the street there and we go east and then we go south and don't even get on the DNR. He said we can stay on their property. He thought that would be okay.
But you're comfortable with the taxpayers financing this?
Sure. Everybody else got sewer and it goes up to their property.
How many, how many, uh, how many lots are there? Just you, you're the only one around like their, Gus?
Two.
Two.
Yes, we've got Litters and... But if we can go down to Litters and they said we could angle it off, cut that corner and go in between Litterer's house, my house, and I don't know, I suppose there you'd put a, uh, manhole. And then I'll, you can go through my property, go down that road and out the front there and dead end out there. I just talked to the DNR. I said, we go out there and then that way someday they need to continue it. Why, you'd have it right there.
But wouldn't it be more logical to use, uh, number three, the phase one of the, if you're gonna have to get rid of these pipes in a few years, to have an eight-inch mine?
That, that's, you know, that's the idea was to, was to do that. Gus's, Gus's proposal just kind of does the same thing.
Yeah.
But this, you've lived there how many years?
Uh?
How many years have you lived there?
Since 2006 we moved in.
How come we're just doing it now? We should've done it when we moved in.
I know it.
I, I'm just curious, 'cause I'm, I'm for option four. Gus dig it and Gus do it.
Well...
That's the option I think.
I've been trying to get you guys to do that. And then when you went and did it for, uh, Workmeister, I thought, well, if you can do it for him, why should be able to do it for me?
Yeah, then he signed that easement today.
The one, again, the one for Workmeister was in payment for the easement.
Right. Not even apples to apples.
But it's really something that should've been done many, many years ago. I kind of believe we have septic tanks and like... I mean, to clean up, I mean, we're so close to the water with our septic tanks. Litters is right in front of its house by that pond. Mine's behind the house. I don't know where that stuff goes. Just...
Well, can't be too bad. The state has two of their own outhouses on their own property. They almost not think it's too big a deal.
Well, that's, they gotta pump them out. But I'd give you an easement through my property if you wanna take that eight-inch and go on out the lane there and, uh, for the future.
We've gotta spend the money, you know, and this is gonna happen. What?
We don't know.
I say you're just kind of betting on the come there, 'cause you don't know what's gonna happen.
No. But I think once I mentioned, what, five years before they're gonna start dredging?
But that's what they say they're gonna dredge, but we don't know. Yuri, what about you? You've been on a long time.
I'm leaning towards option four and the, and the attorney's recommendation.
Gus, you're gonna have to sell them.
Well, I know you did this for Workmeister 'cause you wanna use that lane. But what if I should take back all the stuff I'd give you guys?
I hope not, Gus.
Well, it's kind of the same deal. Only I didn't, I didn't, when you come to me to ask for a favor, I didn't say, okay, but I want this. If you're gonna, if I'm gonna give this to you, I want this. I could've done it to you three times. And I said, go ahead.
We had some issues over the Iowa one call, too, that we could've done something about also at the same time, though, Gus. We got a break.
No, I didn't. Not when I hit that wire at my house.
No, not that one. There was a couple before that.
No, there was one. It was one.
Well, there's, there, there you go. There's one. You got a break.
I got an argument with there, too. We was out there at Dixieland digging. We hit a high, high voltage line and knocked everybody out. And I was the one that was usually down the ditch. What would've happened if I'd've got killed there? Or the one by my house that wasn't marked right. My, my helper could've got killed. So, you know, it works both ways.
I understand that. But you have had some breaks.
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna, um, you know, in my mind, um, you know, whether you've had breaks or not breaks or whatever, you know...
It's really not the issue.
It's, yeah, that's, that's not the issue. The issue here, you know, the, our city attorney, uh, suggested, uh, not doing it and from a legal standpoint. And, and I guess, you know, that's the standpoint that I, along with Jerry, um, would have to, uh, in my mind, go by. Because she's our legal advice and, um, I don't feel comfortable going against legal advice.
In order to move on, we either have to have a motion to do one of the three or no motion at all.
Oh, there's other options, I mean, too. I mean, whatever, whatever you might like it to be.
I don't think we're getting anywhere.
If you said, nope, let's hire an engineer and have him give us some options, you know? I mean, there's some, you can certainly look at those things.
Well, I just think something should be done for the environment down there. And like I say, I'm giving you a, a deal where you can go through my yard and run it out the other side for, that pipe, if it froze once, it's gonna freeze again. So it's just a matter of time for the DNR to say, you gotta get rid of it.
Then at that point, you know, we don't have any options and... They don't have to explore that.
What are you talking about, engineers, Scott? What do you mean? Get them in there to do some measuring and...
Yeah, you know, if...
Depth and all that.
They should come, come do a little quick survey and give us some options on feasibility.
Well, I make motion we do that, take care of that because somehow, you know, see where we're at.
One, just a quick suggestion for you and this...
On option three, yeah.
Yeah, that, uh, um, if we take, can we just take a proposal from an engineer and see what the cost is before we would hire them and kind of go at it that way?
Right.
Cause he's not doing that for free. You're withdrawing your motion?
Or that is, or that is motion to...
That is the motion to do that?
Take proposals from engineer?
What he's talking about there, yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Can you do that if it... I don't think you can vote, Gus. You can't vote.
Why not?
Your conflict of interest.
It's, I think it is a conflict. And you could second, you the second thing, but you should not vote. That would be a suggestion.
Well, it just seems like a shame that if I dig it up, if we hook our sewer line up, two years later, you guys gotta dig and go around.
That's legal to second it?
I'm just not really sure, but, uh, on the voting end of things, I think you should not.
You can't vote, Gus. I guess we'll take your second then. Okay, roll call.
Okay, Reese.
Yes.
Woltman.
No.
Stankin.
No.
Huss.
No.
Okay. And you dapped, Stankin, Gus?
Okay, we'll move on to the Camp Crescent project. This is our timeline.
Um, yeah, a couple of things. Couple of things before, and we'll talk quite a little bit about the bathhouse project. First, first thing on the, on the Camp Crescent projects, I wanted to talk briefly about the, uh, concrete pads project. That you had a chance to go take a look at that. Pads are done. So they've been completed now and it actually looks pretty good. Not pretty good, really good. And, uh, you know, I went down and had a walk, a final walkthrough down there tonight. Everything just looks great. Um, and, uh, Boos is, is requesting payment and I'd recommend that we go ahead and pay him and the total is $28,990 and that's the bid amount.
I vote no. No, I'm just kidding.
Thanks. Thanks a lot.
The sewer's still got a claim.
We need a motion to pay that, right?
Yeah, if we can have a motion.
So do.
A second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Stankin. Let's take a look at that bathhouse project then. And it's, some of the stuff starts on page nine. Just, uh, page nine just shows a, a picture of kind of the proposed location and kind of an overlay of where that sits relative to the existing, uh, the existing bathhouse down there. So, uh, looking at the left side of the rectangle, it's a little bit shorter than, than what is there currently, but it's, uh, a third again wider or so. It goes that much further to the north. Taking a look at page 10, then, just the idea is, uh, we'd have men's facilities on the north, women's facilities on the south, with the mechanical chaise in the middle. That, that was one of the major changes when, uh, we got together with staff to discuss this. Ruth and Nancy, the mayor was there, the Lenners was there. And we, the notion of expanding the size of this mechanical chaise. And it really deals with storage, a lot of off-season storage especially. It'd be a, a nice area to be able to store paddle boats, store kayaks, that type of stuff that we would, uh, need a space to store, uh, beach, beach materials, that type of stuff. So just, uh, let's take a look at the men's here real quickly, starting from the left to, uh, two toilets, two urinals, two sinks. Okay? The, then in the right hand of, part of the top is the shower. So there's three showering units. What you do is you walk into an area that's basically a changing unit and then you walk into a different area that's the showering unit. Okay? And then furthest to the right is one large handicap, uh, showering unit. Okay? Same thing, basically, uh, basic setup for the women's, um, just going with three toilets, uh, three sinks, and then it's the three showering units again. This was very similar to the initial plan that they laid out for the, uh, just for their cost estimating purposes. And Ruth and Nancy especially, they were really, really pleased with the idea. Concept is, uh, is likely split-faced block and, um, just, just building it up that way. Truss roof with, uh, uh, just some additional tie-downs on that. If you know, if we would, would basically market this as a storm shelter down there, it is just a slightly enhanced building down there, additional tie-downs on the roof, that type of stuff. One of the big decisions would be what you'd like the exterior to look like. And if you look at 11 and 12, that's, uh, that shows you what it looked like with, uh, gable ends versus a hip roof. The other two bathhouses down there, uh, have hip roof. But staff kind of seemed to cater towards the gable one. They kind of just kind of liked what that looked like.
That would be the more inexpensive roof?
I don't know. They've never put any cost to this other than...
Less terms.
Gable roof's a lot cheaper.
The only, the only cost estimate there is $220 square foot. That's how they computed initial cost estimate. Uh, that's the same as what it was on their initial cost estimate per square foot, but we, the size of the facility's a little bigger, so this says $257,000. Uh, it just, it just don't feature it costed that much, but we'll see.
And that goes out for business when it happens?
Yep. Um, so that's really as, as much information as we have on the building right now. And I need to respond back to the, to the engineers with any additional input. And really camp staff had no additional input, so we're pleased. And just looking for any, any council input, anything you might like to see.
We just want the gable roof, don't we? There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
You don't want a lifetime shingle, Scott?
A lot of that stuff is still up in the air, but we, we had actually talked metal roofing, just like what's on the other bathhouses down there, those metal shingles.
Lifetime, that's a lifetime shingle.
Yeah. Just that if, if everybody was generally in agreement with this, they would start basically the, uh, uh, details spec on everything now. So...
Everybody happy with what we got?
We'll have them get to work. Let's take a look, though, at that, the draft that I had on your table. It's just, we talked last time about, uh, about financing and how the timeline works out on some of those grant opportunities. So here's... Here's the, uh... Here's a concept, just that we would, uh, during the summer here, we're preparing the spec. The, uh, applications for the Gilrenzy Trust is due on July 11th. Um, just as we think about grants, just kind of remember that they all have their own little timelines that go along with them. We can't have entered into contracts to do things or, or actually started any work before we'd be awarded the grant. So that's limited somewhat in about how quickly we can get into the project. And this Gilrenzy one is a little, uh, more limiting on the backside because you need to give them your final report about what you've done by December 1st of this year. So that's why if we were to utilize that, that grant opportunity, um, we would likely apply for a limited part of the building, like demolition, site prep, foundation work, that type of stuff. We would, that's what we would apply to the Renzy grant for. That can be done in the fall. Then by August 15th, the REAP grants are due and we, we can apply for up to $75,000 there. We, we would look at bid letting around, uh, mid-August. If we do that, and this is what we could do to accommodate the, the timing on these, uh, on these grants, is basically let two bids and one would be like for demolition, site prep and foundation would be one contract. And the remainder of it for the building construction. That's how we could do it to accommodate the, the grant timelines. I don't know that I'm 100% on board with that and I don't know that I would recommend that. To you end up, you always run the risk of ending up with two contractors, with the worst-case scenario being you have some floor problem two years from now and you got two contractors pointing their fingers back at each other, saying it's his problem. You know, so it's, it's a way where we can maximize money, but you really got a question about the liability here in the future. But anytime after Labor Day, begin demolition, likely in September, SAC County Endowment Grants would be due. And, uh, we would likely apply for around $25,000 there with construction of the bathhouse then, winter and spring.
If we wait that long, can they have it done by the time they open up in spring?
But that would...
By the time we open up at...
They wouldn't be able to tell that until they, we give them the final proposal of what we want, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, there'll be a completion date on it the way we bid it, but, and it'll be, it'll really up to the council to determine what you'd like for a completion date. And you could say you want it by Memorial Day. Um, and that could maybe happen, but the cost would be more, I'm sure. So...
I'd like to talk a little bit more about the two contractors. What's some of the pros and cons of it? I mean, you're talking about liability.
I just, the pro is that, is that you're, uh, able to work the timelines on grant funding. It's, that's the reason for doing it. And there's, there's some cons behind it, too. And it's, you know, having to work with, with two different contractors. And then the biggest one is potential problems in the future.
But if one tears it down, that's one contract, and then the other guy put it up, why would they ever be into a fight?
Only if the foundation work... Only, only if the foundation work was part of the first one. The demolition and site prep, that's, that's not that much money, you know, in, in the big scheme of things.
What's the potential savings would you save by having two contractors? I'm, I'm just, Gus, you kinda work, work around that kinda stuff. Do you think there's much of a savings having two coming at it or is it just better to have one and you deal with one?
One's a lot better. Let him get a hold of a guy that needs a trencher or a guy that pours the cement, let him do all that work.
This is fun.
I think the big thing you're gonna run into where Scott's talking about concrete is you got no base. I don't care how deep you go, you don't have a base, you're gonna hit water when you start digging. And, so what are you gonna do when that guy comes back and said, "This is the soil you gave me to work with." "I worked with it, your concrete cracked, now you want me to replace it?" Well, there's no base. You know, you, you, you can only get a found, you know, you can only get a foundation when you got a good base. If you, you know, if you're gonna come back on a contractor, then he's gonna say, "I want a base." And that's where you get into where your demolition guy, and depending on how this guy, I, I'm thinking the engineer's gonna come back with a spread footing and then he's gonna lay block four foot down in the ground up to, up to, it's gonna be twelve-foot block wall. Cause I think that's what's gonna happen. If I was an engineer, every engineer deal I ever looked at, they always have a spread footing on a block wall. They ain't gonna let you go in there and trench it. And I, I don't think it's a good idea to trench it cause you don't have a base. You know, like the building that's down there that Ruth has, there's cracks in that floor, but there's no footing on that. I mean, it's just a spade-deep footing to keep it from moving. But there is cracks in the floor. But, you know, if you're gonna go back on a contractor, he's gonna say, "You didn't give me a base." So when you do your demolition, I don't know, the only way to really get a good base is you're either gonna drive pilings or you're gonna have to fill it up with rock, limestone and pack it in, and I still don't think you're gonna have a base.
I wonder how they do that down at, like, Padre Island? They have the.
They got sheet piling, they drive sheet piling down into the ground. I'll bet that they, they drill a hundred holes around the house, drive them down into the sand twenty, thirty feet and get a base.
So we're gonna have cracked floors no matter what we do?
Well, you might, you might not, you know. But that's something that, if I was bid, I'm gonna say that to you. You know, what do you got for a base? Did you do soil sampling? You know, we're kinda dealing with that out there on Larry Howes' ground, they're gonna do soil sampling, you know, to see what you got for a base, so you know what you can dig in. What kinda footing you gotta have. So you might wanna look at, I think your engineer talked about that day.
Oh, yeah.
On vacation, but I think that came up in the conversation.
It, it, it did, cause actually he was going back to, you know, this is just a, a little bathhouse project, but nope, he's going back and he's gonna work with his, with his structural engineer and they'll, they will engineer the, the foundation on it, it'll be something different. And we would expect that, you know, we couldn't expect this thing to last for fifty years.
Well, the contractor's gonna want it too, you know, cause he's gotta have something to go back on.
Everybody okay with the timelines?
Sounds like a plan.
Well, well, the, the only thing is, deals with how we would let bid on that and whether we can work it with one or two. If I can work with the Renzi Trust on extending any timelines or not, but they've, were not amenable to that in the past. Like, we applied for the playground equipment last year, knowing that it wouldn't be installed until the spring and we weren't funded. Okay.
Doesn't hurt to try, okay, uh, street closures for water carnival?
Yep, everything's on page thirteen and then the, uh, discovered schedule of events is on page fourteen. Lot of the, uh, lot of the old tried and true activities for the, for the weekend.
We still need volunteers pick up the generators?
Volunteers pick up the generators, help out with water, uh, water floats.
We need a motion to approve the activities and street closures.
So do.
Second?
I'll say it.
Roll call.
Boltman?
Yes.
Huss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, fourteen twenty-four, we have, uh, soured employees.
None, it's actually non-covered.
Non-covered, yeah.
Employees, Kay, Kay's included here also.
This is always a, a touchy deal, but just, everybody, just keep in mind that we've got very valuable employees and we wanna make sure that we treat them like they should be treated. That being said, does anybody have any numbers they wanna put together?
What was that numbers from last year?
The thousand dollars for everybody last year.
I think we kinda made up for the year before, we didn't have anything.
Yeah, but I mean, it didn't, it did not keep up with, with what the union was. You know, union was two percent last year, a thousand dollars is less than two percent.
Well, I'm still, I still don't like the two percent, three percent, four percent. I still like, if you're gonna give everybody a raise, it'd be the same.
And those are on page seventeen, Gus, that lays that out. If you wanna see how much percent increases are for everybody, that's it.
You might wanna do individual ones, I, I think everybody knows that Lon stepped up to the plate and maybe did some stuff that's really helped the city. I wanna make sure that we don't, uh, just give everybody a flat one, maybe we're gonna look through each individual person. I think Scott ought to be paid at least what these other guys are getting paid. That would be the least we could do. And we all know Kay makes the city run anyway, so. This is always a tough one every time we do this, we've done this for years, so.
Well, Lon's done an outstanding job and he deserves.
If Lon, you, Kay, you guys wanna say anything, you're more than welcome to, your input. Bill? Kay, now's your chance.
I hear you.
I knew you did.
I'd like to say, when, when I first started here, you brought us in as individuals and, and, you know, you were based on what you did as an individual. You know, you didn't have to go in front of the whole council and, uh, well, you were in front of the whole council, but it was as an individual, you know, or, and it was a closed session. And that's what I'd like to ask for is a closed session. And talk about wages.
We can do that there.
They used to do that all the time. I mean, it, you came up on a Saturday and they had a meeting up in the old council chambers up above and, and, and it was a closed session, so you could discuss what you wanted to talk about.
So are they made individually?
You actually used to have committees for each department, but that hasn't happened in ten years.
Yeah, I, I'd never been a part of that.
This is thirty years ago, what I'm talking about. Cause the council chambers was upstairs then.
They used to have committees for each department.
I can see where that, uh.
Well, it just makes it a lot easier to talk about things, I know, you know.
It's based on your own individual accomplishments.
That's right.
Or what you have taken on or added on versus the whole group.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm not them and I'm not the other guys, so.
That's right, everybody's, you know, everybody's job situation's different.
You guys comfortable with doing that?
I, I, yeah, I would. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. How do we schedule this?
Yeah.
This Saturday.
I mean, you can, you could certainly just continue at the end of the meeting tonight if you'd like, but.
We won't do that, then you, we just bring everybody in one at a time? You guys up for that?
I'm here tonight.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, all the employees would need to agree with that, I mean, that's the way that, that the closed session regulations read, it needs to be at the request of the employee.
And don't, don't we need to give notice of a closed session?
No.
Bill, are you okay with that?
Why do me?
Ted? Kay?
Yeah.
Lon? Scott?
Sure.
Okay, well, going to closed session after the?
Yeah, I said, let's finish up the rest of the meeting.
We'll just finish the rest of the meeting first. Okay, public works report.
Well, um, you know, we got the new sewer running machine and, um, all the city limit, well, I shouldn't say city limits, the inner town area is done. We have most of Provost's done and we'll be continuing around the lake here probably next week. Um, it's going pretty good. Matt and Doug have been doing that and they've been marking down the troubled ones. We'll go back and get the troubled ones after everything is done. And, uh, look, maybe go on with that, uh, roof cutter and I talked to Scott and the mayor today about finding a company that can get some roof decks for us and treat the, the madden mines that we're coming across. And then, um, the rain garden is pretty well done. We have a storm sewer, we gotta dig up going over to Ronnie's and then there's two of them plugged up going across the road, which the rain garden feeds into those and it dumps into the campground, so we have to fix them. And then, um, well, the campground is kinda proceeding, but not, not as fast as you probably would like, but we'll start having more, bring in, uh, some dirt probably this week, next week. The storm sewer, do you wanna talk about that, any guys that we talked about today about, or that you just can handle that internally?
Just that we're, this is the storm sewer down there on Lake Shore Drive for the new house there. And we have an agreement with, uh, with Kevin Schmidt about installing that, we would install a new storm sewer. It's on the south side of the, of the new house. It's a, a ten-inch storm sewer and that would replace two sixes or eights that were there?
Two sixes.
Two sixes that were there before. Okay, so we've, we've agreed and we would go ahead and do this. Kevin's kinda changed his plans up a little bit in that he went ahead and repaired those old two sixes too and, and the roof drains of the neighbors are still tied into, into these two sixes. So, we just need to clarify with Kevin and the property owner, you know, that we're putting in our, our storm sewer. We will have a public storm sewer there, if you fix these old babies, um, you know, we, uh, we have no intention of, uh, maintaining those, those would be private. Um, for whomever they are, but they would just be private.
I mean, that was one of the reasons he called me down there, because those were leaking and he said, "What's gonna get water in the basement?" Cause they're every foot, they're foot tile, you know, they're a field tile. So, I brought that to you guys, we kinda agreed to put that ten-inch down through there, it's upsizing what we had. Now he's come back and fixed those tiles, well, what happened to the deal where, you know, that we had talked about? Cause Kevin was supposed to do all the Schmidt work and everything for it, took the grain gutters into this new system. I put the tees in place for it, so he can do it, yeah. But now he's come back and fixed these and he's, and his intention is to use them old ones, cause he doesn't, I think, cause he doesn't wanna do the, do the work to get them grain gutters tied in. I'm okay with that, but I think the city has to say, "Then they're your babies."
I think we, and we need to put that in writing.
Yeah.
We talked about that today, put it in writing.
So, that's got, Aaron, write something about that, otherwise we've got something extra for them. Stories can change at ten different times, so make sure we get that put in place before anything else is moved forward. That's my opinion, if anybody, Jerry, come sit down.
Water meters?
Um, well, we're currently out of meters, again, I ordered, only, I only ordered one pallet, the new company will give us one pallet and because we weren't paying for them until July, so they only wanted to give us one pallet, but we put them in in like two weeks. But it, I mean, it ate them up big time out the camp, or, uh, Dixieland, that didn't take any time at all just to go from, you know, you didn't have to get permission from anybody. And I've got more meters coming. I thought they would've been here last week, but they weren't, so they should be here anytime soon.
Okay, city clerk report?
Uh, just, just a few things here, the, uh, on page eighteen starts the, this is updated cost estimate from the park board about the, uh, the cost of Emerald Dash for. What it really gets to is it's on page twenty, you can look at the total cost of, of, uh, ash tree removal over a fourteen-year plan where you remove twenty trees every year. Total annual cost, starting in year one, of seven thousand one hundred dollars to remove them, replace the twenty trees with thirty trees at, uh, the, with the additional labor cost of fifteen hundred plus the trees of eighteen hundred. Total cost for the year is around ten thousand dollars. You could follow that down from year to year to year about what it would take to remove these trees and then to replant one and a half trees for everyone removed. Park board would just simply ask that the city acknowledge receipt of their, of their report and that the, uh, report would be reconsidered during budget time next year.
Need a motion? Okay. FYI?
FYI.
I got a couple other things, huh?
MISO?
MISO.
That's a good thing.
Uh, we're dealing with, with MISO now, about the, uh, how they would allow us to have an unsecured credit limit. And, you know, we, we need to have quite a credit limit with them to purchase power, uh, on a monthly basis. But, uh, historically, two things have happened, they've asked us for some collateral that's been held on file with them and it's been this way for a couple of years. We now have twenty thousand dollars on file with them, just being held as a deposit. And then annually, we need to submit to them our financial statements. It had been that, that we, as a city, we didn't even get audited every year, you know, the requirement was we get audited once every four years. So, if we get audited, we'd send them the audit, if we didn't get audited, we'd send them our state financial report that we submit to the state. As staff changed down in, at MISO and they look at, uh, at the, their criteria, interpret it a little differently. What they're really asking for now is that they would need a full balance sheet from the city, an audited balance sheet and, from which they can determine our net tangible assets. And it is extremely difficult, almost impossible for the city to come up with something like that. And it goes back to the basis of how we do our accounting, we just simply do cash accounting with the city. Okay, it's just like running a big checkbook. And if, if they would ask us to, um, place a value on our assets, we don't do that, never have. And that's in order to submit a balance sheet to them, we need to value our assets. You know, you're essentially coming up with a full balance sheet and balancing out your assets and liabilities. Do we, we would have a difficult time doing that. After conferring with our auditor, um, you know, she was trying to give us some different levels of, of, uh, how they could certify this to MISO. One of them just being a compiled balance sheet, we give her the information, she can compile the balance sheet, we would submit it. MISO does not want to accept that, they're holding firm to the line that this balance sheet that we would submit would be an audited balance sheet. And again, we've never determined value of any assets, so we would have to determine value of the assets based upon whatever, um, uh, whatever information we would base that on and then our auditor comes back and looks at her information and verifies whatever we base that information on. Thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollar project to do that. You know, it's, it's just, it's, you know, it, it's completely out of whack in order with, for us to comply with something that ends up being a very meaningless compliance issue with some regulation. So, either we, we get to give them some sort of a financial statement, the other thing that they would, would require in lieu of, of audited financial statement then is to increase the amount of, of, uh, deposit that they're holding on us now, we currently have twenty thousand. And it would go to fifty thousand.
That's what they want, that gives you fifty thousand dollars of money that they don't have to pay the interest on it. That's what, that's all that is about.
As of this morning, talked with them again, told them that we'd give them a compiled balance sheet. Said, nope, that's not good enough, you need to give us an audited balance sheet. Um, had we, uh, it was very difficult to talk with this guy. He didn't really wanna offer me any other alternatives, and I really want to explore anything that we could possibly do, other than just give him deposit. So it was that I needed to talk with the supervisor. Yep, he was gonna have a supervisor call me, and that never happened, and he wouldn't tell me who the, who the supervisor contact was. So, I mean, it, we'll hear from him at some point, but it's, uh, it'll drag on for a while, yeah.
So what's to stop them from, actually, say, do you want another 20,000?
It's, it is stated in their tariff about how they determine what the, what the amount of security needs to be.
Well, what's his first number we got there?
That's based upon our, our cash financial statements. And as he looks at this and says, you know, based upon your cash financial statements, you're in a terrible, uh, position, he says, because, you know, you don't show any value to the assets, the most important asset that we have here is the system. And we never place any value on it. So, it, it will continue, we'll, we'll continue to try to work on this. Um, just knowing, I guess, that the very worst case that could happen is one of two things. Either we end up giving them $30,000 to hold on deposit, or the other thing, and I do not know the implications of this, is that we lose our unsecured credit limit. And that, I think is a problem. So anyway, that's, more to come, but.
Probably what they're thinking too, more to come.
Right.
This year we'll see another 30 grand.
Yep. Depending on how heavy-handed they get to, and how quickly this has to be resolved, we may need to meet again and go through this.
So they don't have a timeline of when?
Yeah, they wanted their money last week.
Tell them you give it to the supervisor.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Soon as we find him.
Um, library's doing summer reading program, they're coming up to where they would, uh, finish summer reading here, I think, uh, end of July, maybe. They're look, they're giving away prizes, and they'd like the, for us to give them 20 mini golf passes.
That'd be fine.
Sounds fair.
Absolutely.
Uh, surfacing at Pier 25, we still gotta get the rest of the wood chips shoveled around, and, and I was talking with Mike and Mike this morning, and it's on the, it's on the radar. That's, they intend to get that done sooner rather than later.
Looks like the kids were leveling them out pretty good.
Well, they started, but there's still a lot of humps.
I was there, I was there the other day, and I leveled out a couple of feet.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. Hope that helps a little bit.
A little bit helps. Yeah, Mike and Mike are like that.
And we planted the bio-retention cell, so you could figure that it's not gonna rain now again, ladies.
That's just, look out the window, what happened today?
Nothing.
We have to go water that thing again, because we planted all these plants, we gotta go water their retention cell. Uh, vegetation harvester, looking at delivery date that's now around July 7th.
Moving on.
I wouldn't count on it.
Um, I'm, you know, we're hearing about lots of concerns about vegetation in the lake, that it's starting to grow in.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to Ben about that the other day, and he said it's really a non-issue right now, still. Um, boats are still able to drive through it, and really, it's not, I can't remember how he said it, not the type that, you know, as bad as it was last year, or anything like that.
The kids said they was out Sunday, and they had to stop four times because their light come on. That was, yeah.
Oh, really?
So.
They're out there with the chemicals today.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were out, they've been spraying chemicals several days, so. They, Ben said that they're working primarily in the big part of the lake out on the east side, but that they also spent a day in, uh, Town Bay, around the beach, and then through Camp Crescent area, sprayed that.
And the kids are getting swimmers itch.
I hadn't heard that.
That's what I was told. They got bugs, bites, and bites.
Don't go saying that.
Oh, yeah, forgot. It was just a rumor, could be wrong. I wouldn't hold any water to that one.
Uh, and then my last thing is, is these pictures that were, were there. And this deals with a couple of property agreements that we've had with, with the neighbors. So the one with the long yellow strip on it, can you envision where this is? This is Chad Schlep's house, uh, and Judish's house there to the left on the picture. Um, in 2007, the, the council agreed to enter into this, what is it, five-year lease, and it's expired now, for this little rectangular piece, it's like 10 feet wide. It's, uh, it's not that much property, but, um, the neighboring property owner maintains it then, and basically they could use it as their own. We have, uh, utilities that run through there, so we never would show any interest in selling it. But, uh, I'd like, plan to work with, with Aaron, bring this back to you as far as, uh, renewing those leases there again. The other one, on the other side, is we had the same lease arrangement, and this was with Lois Peters, now Lois Smith. With, so the yellow triangle is actually directly to the north of the DNR maintenance shop on South Blossom Street. That is our old wellhead property. We had a well there. And seven, eight years ago, I suppose, we, uh, capped that well. It's not in use there anymore at all. And then we entered into this agreement with Lois that she could utilize that property. The neighboring property owner to the north now is Barry Booth. And I talked with Barry about that, and he didn't, wasn't really interested in, in renewing the agreement necessarily, but he sure would like to own that property, to be able to put a garage on it someday. So any comments on that?
We don't need it anymore.
And we don't use that for anything anymore, do we?
No. No, there's a valve probably 20 foot up into there that is turned off, but I don't, you know, that's no big deal, I mean.
We got power in the back of that, though, don't we, Bill?
Yep.
We just have to have legal.
Yeah, we need to make sure we retain our easements and everything, but, um, just need to be thorough about the way we would go about selling this property. Because the guy who'll be interested in buying it's the neighbor who's a city employee, so. Just wanna make it, make sure we follow proper regulations.
Aaron would know those?
I will consult with Aaron.
You wouldn't have to put it up on auction or anything, or?
You know, you, you have to sell, you have to sell property for fair market value. And either you determine what fair market value is, or the way to determine fair market value is to take bids. Which doesn't hardly give you much fair market value, because only one person's really interested in it. But, um, but that meets the legal requirements doing it that way.
What'd they do that time they sold down by Speaker Park, across the road to like, um, Grillings and, and, um, Vicki?
They, they had determined a price on that.
Yeah.
And it was like 300 bucks or something like that, to buy that, that wide area of, right away.
We'll sell it, we'll, we own it right now, right? Sell it, we'll put it on tax rolls.
Yep. And like you said, a structure probably goes there sometime, being in the garage, but.
Big money.
That was really all I had.
Okay, we'll have a motion go into closed session?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, Cleveland?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hus?
Yes.
Spankem?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yes.
In the, in issue of fairness, Kay, you'll be the first one.
Will you be acting on that afterwards sometime?
Yes.
I thought it was too big a price, and he was.